To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let Sally grab a seat, Rudy grab a seat, and then if you join me in a moment of silence for men and women in uniform. Rudy, come sit down for a second, just for a second. Okay, thank you, everyone. Tonight's meeting is the Marijuana Business Regulations Ordinance Public Hearing. We're calling the meeting to order at one minute after six. At some point here, make sure everybody's signed in. A couple of ground rules. There's just not a lot of us here, so if you feel like your question is going to be something that somebody else asked, but you twist it a little bit, let's recognize that. We don't want to keep beating a dead horse. I mean, if you have new and cognizant points, I mean imperative points, please bring them up, but don't hesitate. So, we'll open it up. Who has the first questions? What would you like to do? Anything from the board? Quick meeting. We'll call this here at, oh, I'm just kidding with you. Have you all reviewed the ordinance as it's presented? All right, let's start with questions for that. Yes, Sally?
I just wonder what the improvements are on the original ordinance that was denied or what we're going to know as this current one. I didn't see the original one, so I, they said it was more stringent than the new one, or less stringent.
John, do you want to tackle that one?
A lot of it is the same, but there are some substantial differences, like on the zoning, and that's why we gave you a copy of the zoning map, because the new ordinance says notwithstanding any local ordinance to the contrary, one cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and registered dispensaries shall be permitted use in the following zoning districts, as those districts may be modified: woodland, industrial, and commercial. So, that, all of that wasn't allowed in the original one.
It was.
Very, very.
It was not allowed.
Correct. Not allowed. That's new. And then, two, retail stores and registered dispensaries shall be permitted use in the following zoning districts: woodland, commercial, and village. So, on your maps, you can see that the R stands for residential, the C is commercial, the red is village, and the green is woodland, which makes up a good chunk of the town, and then the purple is industrial. So, we wanted to make sure everybody could see that opens up a good part of the town to some of these, you know, potential facilities.
So, what you're saying is, this is a commercial venture, right?
Yeah, all of it is based on commercial.
And so, it would have to be in commercial zone?
Have to be in the zones listed, Sally.
Not according to this. Could be in the woodland zone, and there's a good, good bunch of woodland area in town, so. But that, to me, was more of a major change.
Right. I just wonder, how can you conflict with an ordinance that's already in place, like commercial zone, residential zone, industrial zone? How can you then say this could...
We're not changing those zones. We're only, he's only suggesting what would be allowed within those zones, which would be a new, new business activity, and new manufacturing.
Chris, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just trying to get the definition. I looked through, I didn't find any definition what constitutes a commercial zone. So, there's, we have two commercial zone districts.
Tom, you want to address that, please?
So, the commercial zone, if you, if you look, so definition, I'll just read the definition of commercial from the ordinance. So, commercial provisions of services on the premises for sale of goods to general public on a regular basis for a territory, and then commercial use is used lands, buildings, or structures other than a hermit patient, defined, the intent or result of this activity is the production of income from buying and selling of goods and/or services exclusive of rental, the residential buildings, and/or buildings. And then if you look at the commercial district where it talks about the district purposes and criteria on page thirty-eight fifteen point six of the Town Code, is that what it is? Commercial, the commercial district establishes an area in Ransley intended for commercial enterprises which may, may not be compatible with other land uses. It is located so as to provide an area suited to such development due to various conditions, and it discourages the proliferation of a strict development. So, it's pretty much permitting what the code has to say about commercial.
So, by your definition, it's called enforcement officer downtown, commercial and commercial are the same?
No, downtown commercial is more an area allows for a more congested development as setbacks, things like that are much smaller than the commercial district, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Not completely, but that's okay. I'll sit down to further discuss.
I think your wife had her hand up before you did. No? Okay, go ahead.
I did take the time to go through when I created a parallel comparison, and there are several things. Many of them are the zoning, the clearances between buildings, all of them with the exception of the distance from a school were reduced. School is set by state law, but everything else was reduced. So, it's, it used to be seven fifty from a church, it's three fifty from a church. It was five hundred from a daycare, it's three fifty from a daycare. So, if you take a map like I did and look at our, and you start drawing circles, it, it leaves some gaps within things, areas which were before not allowed are now open to that because of that. So, there is that, and I do have a question, and perhaps you can answer this for me. John alluded to this. There is this phrase in here which bothers me to some degree in the new ordinance, as those districts may be modified. What does that mean? Does that mean the, the districts can be, the, the use of the district can be modified, or the districts that these are allowed in can be modified? And that's kind of that, there's some wiggle language there. It's not very specific. So, when I read that, I say, wait a minute, you know, you're, you're defining districts, but then you leave this phrase in there. So, you're trying to give room to say, well, later on, we'd like to add it in here. So, I mean, that's a question when I read language like that. And, so if you could answer that, I appreciate that.
The only thing I saw, thought when I saw that was any ordinance can be modified and amended at any point, which may change the current nature. And I think that, I don't know, maybe Luke could have addressed that a little better, what his thought was, but that, that's what I, I didn't think much of it, because I know that you can go to the town, go to a hearing, and have a vote at town meeting, and modify any ordinance.
So, why does that line need to be, I mean, that's...
That's something, whoever the author of this would have to answer that.
And, just a few more changes.
Go ahead.
A couple of things, they took out, I appreciate that they kept in all growth had to be indoors, but one of the things that was removed, the original ordinance said an odor mitigation system that was approved by a state of main engineer. That phrase was taken out, so there is no objective standard to approve. Who, who says, oh, this odor mitigation system is sufficient? The owner, the owner's friend, Uncle Charlie? I mean, so where's the objective standard to that? Without that phrase, it just says must have a sufficient odor mitigation system. How do you define that? That becomes a problem. Before, there was an objective standard, if you're wondering. That was found originally on thirty-eight A dash eleven, section ten, installed, that has been approved and stamped by a main licensed engineer. That has been removed from the current one. If you look at page eight, thirty-eight A eleven, statement of permits licenses, it's section eight, all marijuana cultivation establishments shall have an odor mitigation system to provide sufficient odor control. They took out the rest of that. So, like I said, there is no objective measurement here. It's, it's very a subjective thing. Who determines what that is?
Can I just comment on that?
You can.
I remember you having this discussion in the last time, and I believe the question was asked of you in your committee. Who's going to have the equipment to do that?
That was, that was sound. That wasn't this. That would be talking about something else. That was sound when we had it.
No, this was odor, and how do you measure it? And what's too much, what's too little?
Yeah.
When we talked about odor mitigation, and I remember hearing this conversation.
Okay, but there was still the, a, a state engineer, someone has to have that stamp. That's not there anymore. So, there, like I said, now, I'm afraid we're opening ourselves up to all sorts of lawsuits. A person can't even say, I followed this. It's like, you know, there's no fallback for the town. That's, that's not a good situation to be in. I understand the concern about measuring, but I'm not sure that, we, we've removed one more level, Steve, is what's happening.
Somebody's going to respond to that. Go ahead, Luke.
That was removed because there is no state certified odor mitigation engineer in, in these types of businesses right now, is what I was told throughout this process. So, if it doesn't exist, then it's important to put it in there.
That's fine, but I'm saying it was, it's still a change between, you know, the things. The sign ordinance piece has changed. Before, it said had to comply with the sign ordinance, and it did not allow for any pictorial representation of cannabis, cannabis product, or anything like that. It has changed. It now allows up to twenty percent of the surface area. If you take, and I'm, I'm just using numbers here. If you take a four by eight sign, that's thirty-two square feet, you take twenty percent of that, you're, you're looking at approximately a six-foot square. So, you can now have a picture, three foot by two feet, a foot on that sign, whereas before, all you could have was a sign. So, there's, there's several significant changes, not just the zoning. The zoning is a big one, but there's clearances, there's sign ordinances, so there's a lot here that's been changed, that we spent a lot of time talking about, and now it's just gone. So.
Thank you.
I do have a, if anyone wants to see a comparison, I've taken the time to sit down and go through them.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes?
Steve, maybe John knows the answer to this. We, you touched on last, the last meeting about the possible conflict, and I was curious how to resolve it, between the federal restriction and the state, ala the Border Patrol. Do they, how, how does the state resolve that and them? Do, can they still come in and raid, or stop people, or in any way, give them summons for possession of, or et cetera? Or is, is the state supersede that? I was curious, you know, Colorado and these other states, how they've dealt with that.
Go ahead, Jim.
My understanding from when they first came out with medical marijuana, I was in the legislature, and it, it was all based on a declaration by the federal attorney general's office that is in Maine, that they weren't going to pursue it if the state started. That's the only thing I can recall that, that would have a bearing on that.
I talked to some folks at the Border Patrol. May I answer that question?
Well, we'll start with you. We had a lawyer with his hand up, but go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, because I know folks there, and they, and one of them is the DPAC there, and they're, they're, they say, while we don't look for it, if we see it, we seize it. So, if they're called in, if the local police call them in to assist with something, and there's marijuana there because of their federal mandate, they will seize it. They have, their, their federal mandate supersede that. So, just so.
Thank you.
We're aware of that.
You square with that?
Yeah, along the same line, other than, the U.S. Attorney is the one who has the kind of say on that. So, depending on which U.S. Attorney in whatever region, they have prosecute, prosecutorial discretion to go either way. So, it's, you don't, you don't know for sure whether they would do that or not, but I've had several conversations with Border Patrol agents, and I've gotten the same response as Scott has gotten, that if it's right in front of us, under our federal mandate, we've got the right to seize it, and we will. So, to me, that's, that was one of my concerns, because we have forty-one agents in town, not all at the same time, but we get enough bad press. I hate to see something like that happen with us in that piece, too. So.
Thank you. Yes, Ethna?
Just really quick, I'd like to quote a statement concerning just this particular piece that I read in the article. It says, "When Colorado legalized marijuana, the federal government issued eight guidelines that states with legal marijuana had to follow to avoid federal intervention." So, there are already eight guidelines existing to assist in avoiding federal intervention.
Thank you. Need hands? Yes?
So, if you look at the zoning map, the village, sorry, the commercial downtown, pretty much, you know, I've heard a lot of concerns about, we don't want to see this pretty much anywhere downtown, so far in the map, because retails are not in the ordinance to go in that zone. That actually completely takes care of it. All the way from Hatchery Brook to just about Depot Street, nothing in this ordinance can go downtown. And then, you start to get into, so if you look where it's the red Village Zone, I think there's at least one church heading on sixteen, so that general area would be off when it's, and then you start to get into state law, where you're a thousand feet from the school property, that possibly could get close to that, too. So, there's very, very limited areas to put that down there. So, I don't want people to think just because it's shrunk down to three hundred fifty foot zone, that, oh, great, these things could be anywhere and everywhere, because according to how this is laid out, nothing's going downtown.
Thank you.
So, so to understand then, so the downtown commercial district was deliberately not listed in that because of downtown, right?
Right. Yeah.
So, you're saying it's only commercial?
Correct.
Interesting. Yeah, that's what, that was my confusion, because I thought, there's eight districts, and I said, well, if you want downtown, commercial needs to be listed. So, you're saying that that's completely out. So, nothing in downtown commercial.
Yes, John?
Yeah, the whole zoning raises another issue in my mind. Initially, you were going to allow only one either manufacturing facility or testing facility, and only two retail establishments. So, the way this is written, it's almost like, notwithstanding any local ordinance to the contrary, one cultivation facility, manufacturing, but it doesn't say only one can be there.
John.
The same thing with the residential down below. And, and two, like it's the second part of the paragraph, retail stores and registered dispensaries shall be permitted use in the following zoning districts. Before, there were only two in the whole town allowed, and one of the manufacturing or the bigger testing. So, I, I wonder what your one and two, does that still mean one big facility and two retail stores, or no? It doesn't sound like you have.
I think so. We're trying to keep the retails limiting by not allowing businesses to be within three hundred. So, if there's one business here, the next one has to be three hundred fifty B Y. And on the retail side, there's still some pretty major limitations here where if we go, but it's most certainly in the downtown, coastal downtown area. I do believe that the ordinance says it does not have a cap on cultivation or manufacturing, because that was where I did, you know, a lot of people saying, wow, this is relatively tight and overly restrictive and arguably unfair. So, so.
I just wanted to clarify, because it could be red, you know, one, two, kind of ties it into the original, and it really, it really does.
Just want to have, I don't know how to memorize the whole pages of them.
I've got that here.
It's eleven B zoning of your, your new ordinance.
So, this, that's just, that's not like a one cultivation, it's like basically just a bullet, bullet point number one, bullet point number two.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought when I read it.
Well, say with that? John?
On, to, to reference that, the original one on thirty-eight A dash eight, under licenses required, that's where the specific restrictions were. And if you look at the new one on the thirty-eight A, thirty-eight A dash eight license required, any language limiting numbers was removed. So, there is no limiting, and there was this piece that said the cap of licenses reached category shall be maintained. That was in the old. All that language has been removed. So, there are no caps implied in this ordinance. The only limit is they can only be located within so, as long as they meet those clearances, then you can have as many of these as people want to have, as long as they meet the clearances. So, there's no set cap number, because it's been taken out.
Thank you. Tom?
It may be an issue as far as the building district. So, on page thirty-eight twenty-one in the Town Code, at the bottom of the page, you get point two, it says commercial facilities permitted in the village down, in the village district, with the district's code, that shall be limited to the following. Number one is professional offices, number two is real estate offices, number three is gift shops, number four is similar uses. But, you know, that does leave some, whatever, blue, blue polo similar uses, and I think you might have different content. We're trying to justify putting that under our current code within the village district.
Other hand? Thank you.
Well, as a planning board member of this town, if, if that's how it's read, you know, I don't have that old code memorized either, unfortunately. But, so if it can't go there, then that does everything that pretty much most people in this room wished would happen, at the very least, is getting as far out of town as possible. That right there would occupy all of that space.
And that was Village?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't be up any side streets toward the school, it wouldn't be downtown, wouldn't be toward the lake, it would just be beyond Moose Alley and toward the IGA.
Thank you. Yeah. You two were hashing over something. Did you have some?
No, it was touched on afterward. It was that, that entire thirty-eight A license required. One thing they didn't say was, in the old ordinance, it said licenses, licenses shall not be transferable. In the new one, it says licenses shall be transferable, specifically below that, this entire paragraph, which is what Pastor Wilson was talking about, a few other people that, that part is omitted, about how many retail stores and how many cultivation facilities. That's all.
Yes, sir?
Just one other question. How many different types of licensing or state or federal or just local are required for something like this? I was amazed talking to Kenny Haley at their new place, the Furbish, which includes brewing now. It was even a federal part of that had to be approved. I had no idea that, you know, that I thought it was just something local.
No.
But I was wondering, in terms of something like this, what kind of licenses do you need? Obviously, they operate in Farmington, so they have licenses, but I was wondering who all has to approve that?
Can you, can you address how many different types of licensing there are for, we obviously know recreational versus medical, but are there any substrata to that?
In medical, there are state, there are eight state licensed dispensaries. There is the...
No, no, no. He's, he's making a comparison to alcohol. Alcohol now, you have wine and spirit, or you have a full liquor license where you can do everything under the sun. You have those that have to have a certain amount of rooms associated with it to have. So, there are different strata of a liquor license. It's not just a blanket liquor license. Some places only cert, you have to serve food, et cetera. Are there any of that from a state level?
Yeah. Well, adult use, there's, there's cultivation, retail, testing, manufacturing, there's probably going to be a distribution license added to the, under medical. There's a full blown dispensary license, there's no cap on plants, and then there's the care period license, the maximum is thirty flowering plants, and then there's a manufacturing license available now for the medical side of it. And there's, there's actually a testing license, too. There's only two in the state currently.
Thank you. That answer your question? Do you have one? I'm waiting for you. Yes, sir?
I have another question. There was another change when they were, this was on, and it was originally number six in the original, it's now number five under thirty-eight A eleven, and it was talking about for the purpose, talking about measurements, that how you measure the distances. It had to be someone, you know, to talk about a linear line, but there used to be language in there that said, presence of a town, county, or other political subdivision boundary shall be irrelevant for purpose of calculating and applying the distance requirements for the section. Now, that language has been removed. There is a problem with that, though. I'm not, I'm not sure around here, but I know sometimes towns kind of weave back and forth, and so you get a little section that sits into another, you know what I'm saying, how they, you kind of go down a road, and sometimes you're in this town, and then all of a sudden, back in this town. And with the three fifty straight, it was the shortest distance. Well, without that in it, now I can go around. Oh, well, we're still in Ransley, but we're, and maybe, as the crow flies, we're three hundred fifty feet apart, but we're, we're longer than that this way around. So, taking that direct, you know, taking out the reference to political subdivisions and town boundaries could change where things can locate. You could actually, you know, have someone that's on one side, and then there's a political subdivision. Oh, so we don't count that, so it's no longer a straight line. So, we've got to go all the way around within Ransley's property, and now it's, turns out to be more than three hundred and fifty feet apart, when really, as a straight line goes, it's only two hundred feet.
So, where would that impact in, in Ransley? I mean, I understand your question, and you're concerned, but I'm looking at the map, and I'm wondering what your thought process is, and how that works for here. I mean, I, I would recognize that if, in fact, we had those situations.
That's right. I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just looking at differences, you know, between the, the ordinances, the things that changed, okay? People who need to understand.
I just didn't know if you had an, an area where...
I, I don't know of any, well, the one I was thinking of is down on, with the South Shore Drive, where you kind of have, you come from Ransley plantation or Ransley, you know what I'm saying, there's, there's some of that in there. I don't, I don't know if that would be an allowed. I'm just, you know, but when you remove, to me, when you remove things like that, you know, it's like, okay.
So, that area you're talking about has shoreline, residential, and then resource protection. I, I don't think it fits in there, does it, at all?
Probably not. Where, where those two corners right there, is where it's, you're referring to.
I, I, I'm not trying to...
No, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm just, like I said, I'm wondering on differences between things that have changed, and, but the other piece that goes with that, if you notice, they had a reference A dash two, which was the distances between.
Mm-hmm.
But they took out A three, which talked about the distances between marijuana things. So, I mean, it, it's kind of an interesting way it's worded. The original one had A, for the purpose of subsection A two of this section, and then there was for the purpose of subsection A three. A three is the one which deals with marijuana businesses. If you look at the new one, the language deleted, there's nothing specifically referencing subsection A three, it only hits subsection A two. So, again, that, you know, it's like, wait a minute. And I'm not accusing them of anything, just saying it's, it's changes, and I want to know how these changes affect what happens.
I understand.
I'm understanding Scott correctly. I think it says it in this ordinance, that the subject property lines and the...
Where are you, Luke? I'm sorry.
Section nine O, thirty-eight A dash nine, or O. I kind of thought that first one or two sentences come out.
Okay, go ahead.
The subject property lines and the property lines of the... The subject property lines and the property lines of the properties containing any existing marijuana businesses were three hundred and fifty feet of subject property, following so forth, we've got school, the churches, everything else, so it's, it's measured on a straight line, and I think that's pretty much standard state law, town code, they don't ever...
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
The town manager mentioned changes in ordinances, and what happens if you change, in a new ordinance, you change your zone, for instance, the park used to be in, in shoreline zone, or no, it used to be in resource protection, and then it was changed to what it is now. So that means different setbacks are different in that vote, so what happens is that conflicts later.
Usually, they call that grandfathering.
Yeah, I know, that's what it was.
But, but if somebody can propose an ordinance change, it comes to the selectmen, they call a public hearing, and then they decide whether or not it goes to the public for a vote, so there'll be a lot of scrutiny on any proposed ordinance change before it actually becomes voted and effective, effective.
Yep. Sally, you, we're at that public hearing phase, it's already gone till we go for a question?
I just wanted everyone to note that thirty-eight A five, effective date of this ordinance, so there's been several things that have been pointed out that are challenges or just concerns, so this ordinance, if approved on the fifth of November, goes into immediate effect, which means if there are any problems with this ordinance, which I think a couple of things have been pointed out, you know, because nobody can write a perfect ordinance, I appreciate that, is that I would advise that the selectmen and administration take a look at some of these things, especially the limiting things and so those, and look at putting something together, in the event it does pass, that you're able to deal with some of those things before applications, because all of a sudden, it passes, and on November sixth, Tom can receive forty-five applications, and those will all be grandfathered, because they'll have started the process once the ordinance is in effect. So it might be worth looking at some of the challenges that get, that have been brought up, to see if you want to try to put some pieces in place, because you'll have to call, in order to change the ordinance, you have to have a town meeting, correct? So there should have to be a special town meeting, and then go to a vote, correct? And can the vote be public vote, or does it have to be...
Yeah, it can be public, there's nothing that says you have to...
It could be a show of hands.
Yeah, you could have a public show of hands meeting, and at the meeting, anybody can say they want to move that we do this by secret ballot, if you want, I mean, there's nothing that says you have to have a referendum election, you can do it by show of hands, on any special town.
But how, we don't have public town meetings anymore, all secret ballot.
Not a special meeting.
Special meeting, but right now, this, I, I hear that part, you're right, you're right, yep.
My, my point is, is that I would suggest that you schedule on the books, a special town meeting within a week after that, so if there's something that pops up over the next thirty days, that is a major clerical piece, that you've got some protection, you can always cancel the meeting.
That sounds like putting a cart before the horse, though, you've got to have...
Well, I mean, I see what you... Well, you're also going to have...
Well, you know what was interesting, the first year the legislature passed the retail marijuana, you know, alcohol marijuana, they passed it knowing that it was going to come back the very next year for amendments, because they do, there were still flaws in it, but they wanted to get something out so that they could tweak it, and tweak it, and tweak it, it might take three or four years, it's already been three years that they've changed it, all three years.
And I appreciate that, and, and no offense, town manager Matty, and to your service in the legislature, I appreciate that, but the legislature hasn't always gotten it right.
Exactly, that's why they...
So that's, my concern is, to me, that's not the best way to go about a government policy, and my concern is, especially with some of these pieces that have been brought up, is that the wheels of democracy, as we know, spin slow, one of the reasons the select board decided to vote to put this out to vote in November versus June, is to work in an expeditious manner, that my concern is, with a couple of the challenges in here, that those won't be able to get resolved. And that's why I'm suggesting they be proactive, at least schedule the meeting, because then you don't need the, so many days, I mean, what do we need for a special town meeting? How many days do we need notice?
Either seven to ten, seven, I believe, no, ten days, ten days with a seven day notice of the hearing, and then you have to have...
So seventeen days.
At least ten days prior, if that's my right.
Let's see how the vote goes first, Chris, before you.
Yeah, I'm not advocating that we do what the legislature does, by any means.
Oh, and I appreciate that, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we've already, there's several issues here, and I just think that we would want to try to be proactive and reactive on some stuff we are reacting.
Something new, Luke?
Just a quick follow-up to what Chris said, you have to apply first to the state, and they have to go through a very lengthy process with you, that's going to be a lot harder than the town stuff, and then if they do approve you, then you can apply to the town. I don't really know anybody that would want to go through, we see Tom appear to go through the agony of applying for a, for a license without state approval first, so I don't really see holding a day to figure passes that Tom's going to get, bombarded with applications.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
I appreciate the lengthy process, but what if you put your application in today? Then the lengthy process gets a lot shorter coming November fifth, correct?
Can't put an application.
You can't put an application into the state of Maine prior?
No, no, but I have something else, I have...
Until the town signs a grandfather.
I'm here, and it's the summer of January, the summer's...
There was some, there was some rhetoric a couple of years ago, that they tried to model the application process the same way you do for a liquor license. You can make your application, if it does not get approved by the town, state won't look at it. Yes, Chris?
So, to be clear, from what I'm understanding, what Luke's saying is that there's no way possible, then, that they would make an application here and the state contemporaneously?
That is what, I just asked that question one or two weeks ago, I was in Gunnison's office.
So they cannot apply with the town until it's approved at the state?
Right.
And what section of the laws?
A little bit louder, so we can hear that?
I just wanted to know what's, you know, can you give me the section on that? Because I'd be curious to see that.
It's, you have, it's either that, they've got their own in-house rules stating that, I'll look into it.
Gunnison wrote the rules this past year, he's in charge of that whole, I thought I heard you say Gunnison.
Steve, just one other question, maybe, maybe a loop. Since the town had a vote, and it was voted down, whatever the margin, what is your thinking about bringing it back again? Is, is the idea to be, well, you just keep doing it, whittling it, and eventually it'll pass, or was there something flawed in the original vote? I'm just curious of what, you know, why, why are you bringing it back again, other than you want it personally?
I've said this at some previous meetings, and when the, when this passed, back in two thousand and sixteen, seven hundred and thirty-eight voters in this town voted, fifty-two percent of the town voted to pass adult use marijuana, and the last sentence in the question said to opt in by way of local ordinance, so, and then only two hundred and ninety or ninety-five voters showed up at that last town meeting, I looked at it as we had a low voter turnout, I had a lot of people come up to me and say, holy, I thought this was going to pass, I can't believe it didn't, and I says, you go vote, and along with him, no, I never made it, so that was my biggest reason for going.
The only thing I would say to that, I heard lots of people just the opposite saying, I wasn't sure they were voting on that, and where it was on the, on the ballot, if I knew that, I would have come out against it. Heard a lot of summer people too, so I mean, you, well, you had an argument back and forth, depending upon, I, you know, I know from experience, if you watch something, you, you try to pack statistics as, you know, well as you can, you can say, well, fifty, what was it, fifty-seven percent, but what was the percentage that passed it? As opposed to the votes against it, I mean, you can run that set of statistics anyway, if you're, you know, want something.
In nineteen seventy-four, I had a statistics professor that says, first thing about statistics is you could twist them to make your argument for anything you want.
Absolutely.
Always remember that. Something new?
Yes, something new, but it's a, and I don't, I don't know who to ask this question to.
We'll get you the answer, try.
John may be able to help with this. A concern is an opt-in vote a one-way door. You see, the, the no vote was obviously not a one-way door, we voted no, but it comes back again. If this passes, does the other, do those of us who were happy with the original vote get the opportunity to follow the same process, sign petitions, and bring it back to a vote again, or are we going to be told, well, now businesses are already in this process? That's, that's, you know, so is it, is it a one-way door, once I've opted in, I'm stuck kind of like a turnstile?
The main courts threw out a similar thing, because they called it a ping pong.
Yeah.
And this, I think it was Beesie, I'm not sure.
Castleboro.
Was it? Castleboro, begins with a B.
Close enough.
And it was on funding a new school?
Right.
And the people who petitioned to reverse it just said, no, we don't want to fund the new school, so that makes it a ping pong. We had our attorney rule on this, and he said, no, this doesn't fall under that ping pong thing like you're suggesting, because several changes have been made in the original.
Right.
So I, I think what might happen in your case, is if this passed, you might be able to make amendments to it, but I don't know that you could just repeal it.
To me, that's a one-way door.
Because that, that sounds like that ping pong thing that the courts have already ruled on, that's my opinion.
And I appreciate that, that's why I'm concerned that it's a one-way door, you know, favoring one decision and not, you know, gee, if, if ours, if mine would be a ping pong, why would Chris be a ping, you know, that, why wouldn't theirs be, that's the question, you know, so...
All squares are rectangles.
You know, so that's, appreciate that.
Wait, hold on, Phil?
What was your written ballot, like the regular town meeting?
Yeah.
And it will be, and can you get any absentee ballot, and how many days before?
October tenth.
October tenth. I just feel that, you know, since it was voted no at the regular town meeting, that maybe it should have been brought back at a regular town meeting, not a special town meeting, and half the house, all the others, go on.
That was because of the petition itself said November fifth.
Yeah, right, right.
So that's the next real one?
I'll be right with you, Cindy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted, just an example, one example of how sometimes you can defeat something. In the town where I was a minister for forty-two years in New Jersey, there was a fellow that came in and wanted to have a, an adult quote bookstore, and it was going to peep shows and all sorts of stuff, but he didn't put that in, he just simply said, an adult bookstore, so initially, people said, well, I don't know what that means, I'm sure it's okay, they weren't thinking beyond that. Well, then, all sorts of stuff came to the forefront, you know, what, what these things generated, other communities, people coming into them, a certain crowd, it was, you know, very sleazy, and once that got out, and, I mean, churches mobilized, everybody in their brother mobilized, boom, the thing got defeated. But if they hadn't, they just simply said, well, an adult bookstore, a lot of people either wouldn't have voted, or didn't know, so there are, there is ways to do things. I know clergy that have led groups and organizations, I'm not saying we want that in Ransley, but you can lead a groundswell, if you have enough people that are against something, or even for it, in the opposite way, so it isn't necessarily a done deal, but I think there's ways, for those that are here with concerns about that, that you can mobilize, and people might say, well, don't be putting that out there, we don't want demonstrations down the street with banners, but you can, you have all sorts of...
Thank you, Cindy?
Well, I just wanted to point out, John was, had stated that the petition said it was a, they requested a date of November fifth to vote, but the information that we were provided states that the board of selectmen choose when we vote, and we didn't have a local question, or vote, or referendum on November fifth, so we, we indeed had that option to, to schedule it out and allow more time to process.
Can I, somebody mentioned the tally on the last one, it was one seventy-three yes and one sixty-eight no?
No.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's a moratorium ordinance.
One sixty-six no, one twenty yes.
One sixty-six, one twenty?
It was a fifteen percentage points, almost sixteen percentage point downs, with three percent, four percent abstaining.
Meaning they didn't show up to vote?
They didn't vote on that question, they voted on the other questions on the ballot.
Chris?
Do we have any voting statistics from November of two thousand and fifteen, the last time it was kind of a lame duck year like this?
At our fingertips?
Well, the only reason I ask is because I'd like to ask with Luke's question, I mean, he says a low voter turnout, I mean, how many votes does it need to be, where it's going to constitute a reasonable voter turnout, so you can decide whether or not you go in here?
I'll respond a little bit, my feelings on that, there's certain people that have their mindset on this, and there's certain people that have their mindset on that, and statistical data will support their positions, and we agreed a minute ago, we could turn that statistical data to work in our favor, so, I mean, if you need us to get that for you...
I was just curious.
I don't think it's available.
My guess, my guess is it's less than the amount of votes that showed up for last town.
Yeah, okay.
I could be wrong.
Yep, oh, thank you. Yes, I've been waiting for you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Scott for doing that detailed work on that ordinance, I would have, rather have seen it come from, presented from the town, but thank you, Scott, because I think that that's the way, and I've spoken before about public carings, if we have something, it's just like the park, so we went from start to finish with that park, and there wasn't anything that wasn't presented. So my second question is, how does the state maintain to make sure when businesses are opening in Phillips, in Kingfield, and Carabasit, that you're not having one person controlling all of that area for that type of business?
Can I just ask you how that's germane to this?
Well, I'm just saying, like, that's how they're going to have to maintain who submits, correct? I mean, how does that work? So if someone puts in an application, why would...
But Ransley's only going to be able to dictate what happens within Ransley's borders, not Carabasit, Phillips.
No, I'm asking if the state has a mandate or something on how many businesses can be bought, you can't have two people owning Sugarloaf and Saddleback at the same time, right?
No, Sugarloaf and Sunday River owned by the Boyd family, so in terms of monopoly...
Right, but they're totally separate, they have to be so much in, you can't have, okay, so let me do it this way, Yamaha, you can't have a Yamaha dealership in the town of Ransley and where it is now.
Company driven, but I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying.
But Yamaha sold the snow wheels down at Revra, and it sold its outboards at PJs, and it sold its outboards at Coops, that doesn't work, they sold them off to a place.
And that's determined by the manufacturer.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, it's manufacturing determined, so, Chris, as a lawyer, what's the, what's your perspective on, on monopoly?
Well, I don't think, I think that's going to be a tough one to set, to look at, because I think if you look at the dispensaries, there's how many licenses?
Six?
Eight?
Eight, no, six will come up.
I apologize, yeah, but for a while there, you know, there was eight companies in the entire state that had the full handling of dispensaries, so the state, it, it all depends on what the legislature thought the intent was, that they wanted a few operators, but they thought they were of a good level, versus any particular person being able to get a license, so that's, it's a good question, I don't have any...
Did you have something else you wanted to bring?
No.
All right, thank you.
I want to answer that question. They're going to, no matter what town this is in, the town itself is going to have to approve all this stuff, it still has to go to a planning board. The town of Poland, I believe, Gate, Gate Eight, permits for retail store, did I see that? Poland's got four thousand people, I don't, you know, I don't know why they would do that, but whatever, I don't know.
But is a retail store totally different than having an actual manufacturer?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Question?
So under adult use, you can have a maximum ownership in four retail stores, that's what the state came up with. what the state came up with. There is no limit on how many stores you can have, being a minority owner. And then for cultivation, you're capped out at twenty thousand square feet of flower, which I'm already capped out. And then medical, you're capped out, a caregiver, caregiver can only have one retail store, that's it. No, you can't have minority ownership in three other ones, it's just, just one main license, and if you care to get them all over your store, it's capped out at just your plant count, thirty plants. So if that answers, that's all we have.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything from the board? John, you got anything else you want to add?
Yes, question. You mentioned October tenth, Trisha, as far as absentee ballots, is that when they're required to be requested by, or when they would be available by?
I can take requests anytime I have the applications available. I do not have the ballots available, because I don't have the state ballots available, they're not here yet.
Okay.
So, and if they come in earlier, I can issue them earlier, but anybody that puts in applications, just same as usual, I can not mail it to them, you can come pick it up, or you can vote it right here. The state ballot has two questions, the town ballot has one.
Okay, so as far as the town ballot, it, it can't be done online, it's going to be done either here physically or early.
Or available.
By mail, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's for sure, maybe, as the line knows, it's going to, it's going to be early, but...
Anything else, folks? Thank you very much, appreciate it. We've got, we've got to close the public hearing at five oh seven, and we have one item to deal with after that. We need to sign the consent item for licensing of winter road maintenance. Mr. Chodosh has submitted his contract.
Chairman, I make a motion to sign the license for winter road maintenance, Mr. Chodosh, contract.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We need to sign the... You second it? All in favor? Okay, super, thank you.